...stay with Elliot.
So he's not dead.
I love those "not dead" observations.
Yeah.
They were too...
You're really spot on.
I wrote two X.
It's great, because it's falsifiable, I like that, and it's also statistically testable.
I can just read my wallet, no. This will go better than the actual.
All right, can you kind of fill us in on what the topic is, because nobody else knows?
It's answering a handful of slightly tricky questions. Our main question, we're just going to use the baseball, baseball bat.
Hold on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so what we are testing, we have read some papers about hot state versus cold state, and it seems pretty clear that hot state can be stimulated, you know? We can do that with color, and with the speed of images, and with sound, which we are going to do during the hot state treatment. We also are interested to see if we can stimulate cold state. So we're going to give the same questions to the hot state people and the cold state people, except there's going to be a difference. In between the tricky questions, like that ball and bat question that people typically answer incorrectly from a hot state response, we're going to try to stimulate the prefrontal cortex by asking them questions that force them to think. So we are going to use like word scrambles, pretty simple ones, that will make the person kind of go, "Oh, wait, use my brain, use my brain." Then ask another hot state question, and see if we can get a statistically different answer, like if we can actually get the cold state people to answer them correctly. And we think that would be interesting, because we haven't seen a whole lot of literature about the uses of stimulating the cold state, or the feasibility of stimulating the cold state, and we want to know. So that is basically the premise of our experiment. We are hypothesizing that we can stimulate the cold state, even though that might be pretty hard. That is our hypothesis. Also, we are going to control, like, we're going to control our groups by asking them a bunch of demographic questions at the end. The demographic questions, we're going to ask for age, gender identification, income, and education, pretty typical demos, so that we can make sure that the people taking the cold state, the hot state, and the neutral state questions are not statistically different. That's a pretty important caveat for this experiment. Does anybody have any questions about the basic premises? No? Okay. So, the tricky questions that we are going to use is the ball and bat question from the reading, so if the combined price of a ball and bat is 110, and the bat costs a dollar more than the ball, what's the price of the ball, what's the price of the bat? The second question we're going to use is if you're in a race, and you overtake the person in second place, which place are you in? Okay. Third question, and this one we kind of want to vote on, because they think it's a bit lame, but I had a hard time coming up with tricky questions, is if some days have, if some months have 30 days and others have 31 days, which month has 28 days? Of course, they all have 28 days, but that might be, it's, you know, what do you guys think? Kay, Nate? You would've got it wrong.
Probably operating on the hot state.
Do you think that it's too, do you think it's...
I think that when people say how many days or in a month, that you're going to get that response, because that's, it's just so common to think of that.
Yeah, it's a linguistic standard.
I like it as a joke, but it isn't. It's a good joke.
Yeah, I thought with that question, that's one of the ones where I'm like, eh, a little bit, because it doesn't have a clear answer, really, because you can interpret it in two different ways.
But is it important, wait, and these are the ones that get them into the cold state?
These are actually the questions that were, that if you're in a hot state, you're going to answer them incorrectly, like that ball and bat question, and then the, if you're in a race and you overtake the person in second place, which place are you in? Many, many people say first. And look to Professor Woods. And then the other two questions we have, because we wanted to get enough of these to see if there was actually going to be a difference, because if it was just one or two questions, we think it would be too difficult to say statistically, these people are getting them more correct more often than the hot state people. So how much soil is there in a hole that's one foot by one foot by one foot? There's no soil in it, because it's a hole. You're making faces.
All right. I'll explain why I'm making faces.
Okay.
Face number one is you got to worry about those questions that are out there. Some people have already seen them.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point, we're all going, ah, ha, 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 yes, how could that possibly happen? No. A lot of people have seen it, so you have to obscure them a little bit, so that they don't know it's the bat and ball question. And they also don't know it's, the race one's pretty damn good, I like that one, though. As far as your other questions that came out, sorry, I'm eating a carrot at the same time.
No, it's good.
They're more like word tricks, rather than math tricks, is what it comes down to.
So we need to focus on math tricks? Well, the last question is a math trick. What's the area of a triangle with dimensions 14, 11, and 25? There is no such triangle, because that would mean the hypotenuse is equal to the sum of the other two sides?
I think you're going to have a lot of people.
That one's going to plump everyone right into cold state, right?
Throw that out, yeah.
No, these are still the hot state questions, but then for the, to get someone into the cold state, Matt is going to explain a little bit more about, like, all the stuff that's written there, but Noel?
What percentage of people do you want to get the question correct? Because obviously, with, you know, your line teaser questions, there'll be a certain amount of people who just get them wrong regardless of the state. Is there a certain kind of a span that you're looking for? Because a lot of this has been done online, there's like lots and lots of stuff about brain teasers and math problems, and it'll say, you know, how much percentage of the people actually get this right? Or you might want to do it yourselves, that this is just another side project that you do, you know, on the, you know, on the, what is it called, Google?
Turk.
Turk, thanks. You know, you mean to find out your percentage range of people who are getting it correct? You know, because this is the thing, is you might have a problem where it's, you know, because I can give you some problems that, like, nobody will get, you know, that I know of, but there's, you know, or maybe 10% of the population, but that means then that the percent between the hot and cold state is going to get so small, it might not be significant.
Right, and so what we were thinking, at least my understanding of what we were thinking, is that we're looking for just a statistical difference between these two, so like a chi-squared would be enough of a statistical difference, I believe. But it's going to be impossible to know what percentage of the population, if they had an infinite amount of time, and they were reasonably intelligent in thinking about these questions, who's going to get them correct? Because I don't know how to...
We're going to have some demographic information at the end.
Let's get mechanically what's going on with your data collection there. Is it going to be that you ask, you've got, so far we have two hot state questions up there, that's, or two tricky questions that you have up there.
Right, the other three are going to be thrown out, and make new ones apparently.
Well, the way that I kind of saw this one working out is, is that you would have some kind of stimulant to, in order to induce hot state, and then you would ask a question, hoping that you got hot state responses out of it. Then you would get a stimulant in order to induce cold state, and then you would ask another one of those questions, and then what you could do then was actually see, here's the proportion of people that got it, you know, right in the hot state, meaning how many were effectively stimulated into the hot state. The other one could be how many got it right after you did your cold state stimulant, and then went ahead and said, well, that is, indicates that we actually did stimulate the cold state. So after that, you got to start flipping some things around, as far as your order, hot state first, cold state first, and at the same time, you have a couple of different treatments there to induce the cold state.
I see, yeah, we were thinking of it as three different groups of people, like, one group just being stimulated in the hot state, one group being just trying to simulate them into cold state, but it makes sense that what you're saying is we need the same person to be triggered in both directions for that to be statistical.
If we tried to flip it, though, I don't think we'd be able to get any information, because you can go from cold state to hot state pretty easily, but it takes a period of time for the body to react.
Seventeen minutes?
Yeah, it's the average. If somebody is in a hot state, it takes about 17 minutes to get them there. Actually, men are worse than women. Women can go in about 12.
Wait, I... Wait a minute, what are we talking about here, as far as hot state goes? No, 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 because, well, look at it this way, I mean, we do it all the time in this room, particularly when the bat-ball thing showed up, we simply said this, and then all of a sudden, it was, oh, we slowed down just moments later, and all of a sudden, you did the math in your head, instead of just blurting out right away. And so it's, I think what we're doing here is we're using the same word symbol for hot state for two different things on that 17-minute cycle, rather than the one that was just like, oh, you know, I just took a sip of coffee in between, and ended up in cold state.
Well, I mean, all of this is, of course, like, you know, a matter of how, I mean, it's a state of brain in terms of how, like, somebody's hot state would be overwhelmed and flooded, I mean, that can be like, if somebody reaches a peak of that in 17 minutes of, like, concentrated comments to get them down, but it's less for women. No, no, but it's all percentage, this is the other thing, too, with the, you know, studies already over again, where people think that they're actually calm and functioning at the highest level, and they're not, because basically, this has been studied many times over by heart rate, heart rate, blood pressure, temperature, you know, and also how well they do on such things as tests.
Oh, we're actually using a sample group of Buddhist monks.
Very good. They actually, it takes them 30 seconds, I'm going to say.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've got, then to clarify your experiment then, what you're going to do is you're going to have one group, which is going to receive only the attempted hot state stimulant, in order to find out what the base, what the hot state rate is on each of those two questions. Then what you're going to do is you're going to set the other people with the combination of some kind of cool state stimulants, and then go ahead and check the difference between those two proportions on getting it correct. Is this right?
Yes.
Now I understand the story. Okay.
And we did have miscommunication, how about that?
I told you.
The entire time we were meeting with Professor Woods, he was just talking about, okay, balls bouncing back and forth. So we know what state you was in.
Just so you guys know, if at some point you're interested in this stuff directly, because I think you're completely right, that it's far easier to go from cold state to hot state versus hot state to cold state. This is John Gottman.
Yeah, I am totally interested in that.
Okay, and I will, because you are right, and you are more right than you possibly are.
A lot of this stuff I know just sort of intuitively, and, so, okay, here's a, just a sort of overview of how we're stimulating. Hot state, we're using saturated reds, like, citable colors, so something that is both engaging and busy, and I got a little background of research to say that this stuff does it. I'm going to use a little flash in between frames, like, just for a second, the color, everything gets a little bit brighter as you switch to the next question, which will stimulate speed, and Jessica backed me up totally on this, and she was great, and I just released dopamine, and all of a sudden, you think you're in a race. Easy filler questions, so maybe you get 10 questions altogether, four of them are the questions we're actually testing, the rest of them are just retardingly easy, so you have to answer dog, so you're not applying your brain. Distracting elements, pictures and shapes, something that'll bring your eye away from the question, and give you the opportunity to be like, ooh, pretty colors over here, look, keys jingling, that sort of thing. And possibly some reflective filler questions to just distract a person, like, what was your first pet's name? You're like, oh, now I'm thinking about Fluffy, and how, it's so sad, let me die, that kind of thing. For cold state, we want to...
So you're hitting them with all of these at the same time?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm doing...
What's going on?
I'd rather get some numbers and say, okay, at least a couple of things over here worked, and a couple of things over here worked, and have some space in our numbers. For cold state, we want to engage the person, so we're using mid-saturated blues and greens, and these are, these are colors where you're a little bit calmer, and a greater proportion of the population is able to deal with them. Some people just like a lot of shit happening, so they like reds, but most people are going to be calmer with a blue, and they're going to like it more if it's saturated, so it's like a really vibrant kind of blue. Going to mildly emphasize some of the key words, so when you do the bat and ball thing, like, you have to emphasize $1 more, and what's the different, you know, the difference, just so that...
It'll be worded the same, they'll just be italicized or bold.
Just, what I was thinking is just like make it the tiniest bit bigger, and you got a few guys, so. And the obvious mental activity filler questions, like, when you say, okay, here's a word scramble, people know that, okay, now I have to look at it for a second, see how I can rearrange, but like a five-letter word scramble, where you can get it pretty easily, but you know that you're going to have to use your brain to do it. And just a steady presentation of the questions, instead of the race effect in the hot state, just saying, you know, it'll be this, then this, then this. And then for the neutral state, which is going to be our third treatment...
Whoa. Well, here's, I thought, I was under the impression that we were trying to do was, which way was most effective at inducing a cold state situation? So you had to have, here was your hot state control group, and then what you had was treatment one, this batch of cold state inducers, treatment two, this batch of cold state inducers. That's what I thought you were doing, trying to identify what was the best way of doing it, instead of just throwing them all in just to see if it was possible.
Oh, no, no, what I wanted, and I kind of thought you might have that reaction to it. What I want to do is just do it all at once, and then instead of having, like, here's our hot state, and then cold state one, cold state two, right here, hot state, and then cold state. And I realize that then you can't be like, well, it's the colors, or it's the presentation of the questions, but I'd rather, I'd rather say, okay, we got a definitive result, doing it like this works better than doing it like that, and then if somebody wants to follow up our research at some point in time, they can break those down and...
Well, here's me, seriously, I need to know that. I can't have some of the mental activity filler questions necessarily in my survey, but I need to have some kind of, a little chunk of research done, so that I can actually get people to give cold state responses on surveys of mine, instead of just reacting like this on some things. And so I need to know something, you know, are the filler questions absolutely necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
But the filler questions, like the word scrambles that are using, I chose words like yellow, which have very distinguishable letters, like, there are very few words that have a Y, and a W in them, and two Ls, you know? So they're not going to be questions that are so obscure that somebody's going to have to have any sort of specialized knowledge to answer them. And we do really want those questions in there to stimulate the thinking part of the brain, which is the prefrontal cortex. The literature that we're reviewing for this is a lot of neuroscience and neurology, and very science-based, of this is why each one of these things is used. And then here, we're going to take a lot of that other stuff out.
We're just going to take all the stimulation off, for the most part.
And just ask the same questions, so...
Yeah.
Does that make sense? They're still going to have the filler questions, but they're, we're not going to have the colors, and we're not going to have the emphasized keywords.
But the mental activity questions?
Are still going to be the same.
Are still going to be the same.
So if we get the same result from this, as we do from this...
That's why we got 10 questions altogether, different filler questions between these two, but, but four questions that are the same each treatment.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Now it is starting to make sense to me, so it is something...
So we really want to determine if color and emphasis is enough to make a statistical difference with cold state. John?
I can...
Well, I'm a little dubious about emphasizing the key words.
Yeah.
Because it's sort of...
People are believing?
Well, you're, you're, you're losing what you're trying to test. In other words, what you're trying to test is can the person actually work out which are the, what's the crucial way of looking at the problem to solve the problem? And if you give them too many cues, then you're not really testing the problem-solving ability in the same way.
Sure. I feel like that's something we could throw out.
It is, yeah.
Well, just at that point, with the emphasized keywords, the question becomes, is it the emphasis that induced the cold state, or is it the everything else that did?
Yeah, it's unactive control.
Or with the emphasis, could they solve the problem in hot state? Is the emphasis...
The way I was going to emphasize, there wasn't...
Actually, here.
Like words in bold. I just put it to...
You point this around for a while, I got to do a quick...
Mildly alter some of the words, so they're just, like, subconsciously, you recognize them, but, yeah, when I was thinking about that, I did decide I could give it up.
Professor Woods wants to do an experiment for right now.
Well, this is, this is...
See, while I'm setting this up, so the situation you can have is there could be no discernible difference between your three states, or you could have any of them come out the same, like, for example, only one of them can pull away. If it's the neutral one, then you're, you know, you know, what are you going to do with that one? But...
If it's the neutral one, then we're going to know that color, the difference between reds and blues, that actually any sort of color stimulus is going to irritate the hot state, as opposed to with this neutral state, where we, it's, like, where it's going to be grayscale, like, literally, just color void, we're going to have the same questions, the mixed filler questions. If we get cold state responses from that, we're going to know a lot about what's stimulating people in a hot state, and whether or not it's true that, I mean, some of the literature that we're consulting about, the color stuff, is psychology advertising, and, you know, what they're using from that school of thought about how do we get people to buy? And I know, like, in hospitals and different kinds of medical settings, that's why a lot of it's green and blue, is because that's supposed to facilitate calm.
My understanding of it is, is the basic difference between hot and cold state is the amount of time spent trying to solve the problem.
Also, also the way that you solve the problem. One of the papers that we're using as a reference, it refers to it as top-down and bottom-up solving of problems, and so you compile the information in it in different ways, and basically with the hot state, you don't get all the information from the bottom, and then get to the top and make your decision. You just seize some quick information and throw your answer out.
But the reason for that, I thought, was because you're trying to solve the problem either quickly or carefully.
Yes and no. My understanding is, is that if you're trying to, like, even the state of trying to solve a problem versus perceiving that the problem's halfway solved just by reading it, is a different kind of literal neurological response. Like, one of them is a, what we call a gut reaction, like, we read in massive bounded rationality, where somebody's just kind of like, oh, this is the answer, and it's either, so simple, I don't need to think about it, or I'm just having this response that's coming from the mammalian brain that's really quick, and people go with that. Or you read the question, and you think, okay, I have to actually process this, and you use a different part of the brain. So it's a combination of time and of intention, and there's really no way for us to measure intention, per se, because we don't have a functional MRI machine.
But you are arguing that hot state and cold state are well-defined concepts, right?
Well, we're arguing that they're different. That we're going to see a difference in the response. We can't prove that hot state and cold state are completely different, we don't have access...
It's a physical reaction.
Yeah, I mean, so we aren't going to be there with these people, we can't take their blood pressure or their heart rate, but, you know, if you wanted to be that exact, I encourage you to pursue that in math.
Now, I want to point out my small experiment right here. What did I emphasize? If anything.
What do you think?
What do you think is the difference? This is what I thought they were talking about with...
I mean, it's a subtle emphasis.
The E and the...
Actually, it's all of the.
All of the? Sorry.
I think it would be interesting, I don't know if you could do it within the parameters of this, but to measure the difference between, or measure how long it takes people to actually respond.
I don't know, but Sevvy says that we can do something that, like, kind of monitors...
Yeah, we got a computer guy.
I can, like, tell how much time has been between questions. I can even, like, if they were to, like, click another question, and then not submit that one and change their answer, I can see it, so I can just see what they're doing on the screen, so when you kind of click it, it'll just respond to me, and it'll just tag it, and then know what their real response was versus their even, like, artificial response, if they second guess themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it would be interesting to do a study where you took a video of it, of like, you verbally gave someone these questions, and then, I don't know, see how long, see if they, I mean, to see the difference between whether, you know, whether someone gets the answer right, whether they get it wrong, how long it takes them to do that, because, I mean, if you get these hot state responses, people are probably doing this in, like, you know, you're getting within a second, or so, you're getting...
Yeah, yeah.
We may find the kind of use for Chat GPT. Dude, that's, have you thought about that before, or did you know?
No, I just thought of it when you said it. What a good idea.
Are you sure you want me to...
You can stand all the wingers.
Do you want it back?
I'll hold it around for a while.
What's a good idea, if you can stand all the wingers?
Chat GPT.
It's this website you want to, you just like find someone, which is people in Chat GPT, but you end up seeing a lot of them.
Anyway.
I was just going to add that if these stimuli don't induce some kind of a difference in the decision-making state, you'll see that, too, because you'll see that everything...
Yeah, I mean, and that is a result, like, and I'm, we're comfortable with actually just getting the results and being like, okay, we were wrong.
I feel like if you put it together in a way that we're confident with, and we don't get results, I mean, that's...
Now let's do some sample size checks, after we talked a little first.
Can you just do, like, really briefly, just a walkthrough, like, you know, in either of them, just a walkthrough of what they see, and can you explain that, so I can sort of have a better idea of what the...
Okay.
What the experiences of the...
Do you actually have an idea?
No, so we're going to do, like, a frame-by-frame question, so you answer a question, you go on to the next one. Start out with, so you got your human test, then move on, or then, like, a title screen, describe briefly what's going to be happening, you know, just 10 questions, say, you might get a bonus for answering as many questions as possible, right? Then start with the questions, and you got your backdrop on a slide, and like a spot to fill in your answer, and then a button to go to the next question. Just go through 10 questions like that, and then like a demographic information page at the end.
And so where is the, the color is just basically, you know, going to be...
Backdrops.
Is going to be backdrop?
For the hot state stuff, I mean, you know, there might be a picture above the question.
Butterflies.
Butterflies floating around, dead babies.
No dead babies.
Yeah, just things that are visually distracting, there are on-the-frame questions.
Yeah, a question in the middle of it, and then...
During the whole, during the 10 different ways, it's going to be a picture on each question, or is it going to be the same one throughout? Are you going to change colors of the background?
The colors won't be changing, but if we don't have a picture for a question where it's going to be distracting, we'll just use it like a shape, or like a little starburst up in the corner, or something like that, and there won't be, in the cold state, there won't be any significant change. There won't be any pictures to distract you from the question, it'll just be the questions.
What's kind of cool is that we can actually find out if logos on a survey actually have an effect on some of the responses. Logos have a tendency to be distracting.
So the difference between, I have this up here, but the only difference between the cold state and the neutral state will be the background color?
Basically.
Background color and stimulating questions. We'll use some basic filler questions, and then every now and then, there'll be one that makes you use your brain.
And out of your 10, how many fillers?
Well, we originally had five tricky questions, but we have now eliminated three of them, so maybe two or three trickier questions, like those ball and bat questions, and then the rest of them will be...
Sample size. Well, your calculations, don't give me as many as possible.
I'm hoping for about 50 in each one, because we do still need to control for demographics.
Okay, 50 in each one, and how many people will, out of the 50, how many people will answer hot state, blah, 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 all the time?
No, we're saying, like, 50 hot state, 50 cold state.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just getting...
How many people will be always in the hot state?
It's, it's the...
No matter what...
Well, no, no, it's, it's, I'm trying to get a sample size calculation here. So 0.25 times 0.25 divided by 50, take the square root. That right there is the standard deviation on proportions, and if you do that for 50, what do we, what's that, like, 6%, either side, something? Six, six percent either side, something like that, twelve percent either side? Who's got a calculator out right now? You've got one sitting right in front of you. It's a computer, yeah. It's a Facebook machine. Well, here, here, you hold this for a while.
He said point two five by point two five.
Sebby's time to shine.
Whoa.
Yeah, how's it feel, audience? Now you're in the spotlight.
So it's about seven percent either way. I think you're not finding that big enough, is your difference gonna be big enough so that each one of those proportions will be seven percent either side of the fifteen fifty? Yeah, I look terrible on camera, I know that, I'm on all the time and I look worse that way. Don't do that. You've just been moved to. So do you think the difference is gonna be that big? It's gotta be bigger than that, it's gotta be like, looking like twenty-eight percent difference between the two of them.
Yes.
That would be awesome.
Well, that's not just awesome, that's what you're able to detect. Anything smaller than that, you're probably not gonna be able to.
Where are you finding your people, are you using mechanical turf?
Yeah.
Now you guys understand that on mechanical turf, everyone tries to go as fast as possible, because that's the only way you can make at least enough money per hour if you're really trying to make a living that way. Which generally needs your media as well.
No, the demographics are a little different. It used to be that.
Do you pay for Indian movies?
Huh? No.
No.
It pays a dollar.
Yeah.
It used to be that almost everybody was US and Canada, but now there's a larger Indian contingent. I just recently checked the demographics on this because I just did something on this on the ability.
Bonuses for correctivity.
No bonuses.
Why not?
Because bonuses is going to create a different kind of incentive thing, like they all have skin in the game, so they'll be using a different part of the brain.
Oh, okay.
Again, experiment fails is fine.
Yeah.
I don't know why, I'm okay with that, failure is good. Edison has two thousand ways not to make a left. You're gonna ride the ragged edge, you're okay, but are you sure that you can, you know, you're, you're, you think the difference is gonna be, it's gonna be this way or that, right?
Correct, not understanding the math whatsoever, I can say with certainty.
You might need a bigger sample size.
Yeah, we're just gonna go until we get as many people as possible anyways, so.
You run out of money before that happens.
As you continue to point the camera at the table.
I thought we were just.
A hundred per.
So what are you doing for the?
It's, it's P times one less P divided by number of observations, you take the square root of that, and that's an approximation of standard deviation on fractions. It's, it's not exactly what they're gonna end up doing, they're gonna end up doing.
Yeah.
That, oh, oh, sorry, not point two five, what am I thinking?
We don't know.
I'm an idiot, no, 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 uh, give me a second, I'm gonna do this. Sorry, it, our previous example, we actually were dealing with about three quarter, one quarter. So it's about fourteen. It's about twenty-eight still, it's about the same.
Okay.
We're okay.
So maybe we'll shoot for a hundred minimum in each.
In each category. If you do that, and again, let's make this calculation.
We can make it a slightly smaller questionnaire to, just to make it.
That gets you down to five percent, so it's ten either way, twenty.
I think that that's good.
Okay.
But we should do that.
All right, so we've sent, handled the sample size issue, we handled the treatments.
What do you think?
Guys, is this, does this look clean enough for? This all clean enough for everyone then? All right, this one is done.